Cool.
All right. It is six oh two. Welcome to the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, September twenty seventh. If you'll all rise and join me in salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business, I want to state a motion to approve the minutes of August thirtieth.
So moved.
I'll second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the warrants. Payroll warrant number seven for three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and five dollars and ninety-three cents. General warrant number one zero one three for four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. School warrant number one zero one two for one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-three cents.
So moved.
Second, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the next thing we have on our financial items is ARPA committee recommendations. So the letter we have here is at their meeting on Thursday, September fifteenth. Twenty twenty-two, the ARPA committee voted to submit the following spending recommendations for your approval from the town's ARPA funds at this time. One hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete visual inspection of gravity sewer system with a report qualifies under the water and sewer infrastructure investment, decentralized wastewater treatment systems that treat municipal wastewater or domestic sewage. And there's a proposal quote attached, seventy-five thousand dollars for sewer line repairs in the event that failures are found during inspections. So that means that that's seventy-five thousand dollars if there's no failures found, that they would go back to the ARPA line item in the general fund or wherever that is. And then three hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars for water main repair and replacement on Elm Street, between Edna Circle and Ward Street and to include work on Chase Road qualifies under the same infrastructure part of the ARPA rules. And there are quotes attached and then to approve a contract with Capital Strategic Solutions for ARPA spending and reporting consulting services with spending notification at twenty-five hundred, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. So. So there's three items on the ARPA recommendations. John, do you want to vote them all at once or you want to look at each one separately?
Do we need to do them all at once or separate?
Well, there are three separate items, one sewer, one's water, and one is for spending for council in case.
Yep.
Or consulting services in the event we need them.
Or we do them all separate then.
All right. So the first ones, we'll do one and two together, it's actually two. So one hundred and fifty thousand for complete visual inspection of gravity sewer system and seventy-five thousand dollars for the sewer line repairs in the event that failures are found during inspection. I'll state a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Well, second, discussion?
Just so that they know, that's for the sewer department to run a camera down some of the sewer pipes to see if there's any bad stuff going on there. And the second part of that, seventy-five, because I was talking to Jim Nyberg, who was the super sewer for the sewer department. And the seventy-five would be for if they find anything bad with the piping or whatever, they'll have money to repair that. So that was it.
Okay, now Ethan Millad is here, he's the chair of the ARPA committee. Do you have anything you want to say or do you want to speak for it or against it or?
On that, oh yeah, I'm in favor of that. With the unanimous recommendation.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I'll say is just so people know, the inspection is town-owned lines only. It doesn't do lateral lines that are owned by residents on their own property.
Right, so that's just the main trunks. And as Ethan said, lateral lines are the responsibility of the homeowner. Now, the cameras will turn and look down those lines. And if they see something distressing, they'll let us know. But that's not under the purview of that line item. So motion's been made and seconded to approve the one hundred and fifty thousand for the visual inspection and seventy-five in the event that any failures are found. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's made and seconded. Been approved, so I guess that's that. So number three, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars for water main repair and replacement on Elm Street, between Edna Circle and Ward Street to include work on Chase Road. I'll state a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second, discussion?
So that everybody knows that area of town is old and there's also a section that's missing, I believe, between Ward and Chase somewhere down there. So when they have to shut the water off to repair Old East Brookfield Road, they have to shut off that whole section. I believe this will take some of that out. So they only have to shut off a certain section if they have to go down that way. And they're going to be replacing piping as they go. That was it.
Ethan, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's about right, yes, it's aging and yeah, this will allow them to complete repairs and shut off service.
They don't have to shut the whole.
Right.
Right. Now, the reason, now the reason we're able to include these things in the ARPA money is that in the event that we have another episode like we've had with the pandemic and people are stuck home, this will, this will help the infrastructure so it doesn't get overworked with everybody home and using their facilities to a greater extent than they normally do. That's right, right? All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, number four, to approve a contract with Capital Strategic Solutions for ARPA spending and reporting consultant services with spending notification at twenty-five hundred and not to exceed ten thousand dollars. I'll state a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second, all right, discussion? Ethan?
Well, I will just mention, okay, you were, in terms of liability, they are willing to assume all liability. So any recommendations that they make are on them as the consulting firm.
Okay.
They did request a standard town contract, which I don't know if we have. She, if we don't have one, she'll add language to the proposal.
Okay, now the reasoning behind the consulting services, would you, would you explain that?
Sure, yeah, basically the, a couple of reasons. One, primary reason is the reporting and financial aspects of this grant money is extremely convoluted and difficult. And it comes from initially from the treasury and then down to the state DOR and there is absolutely no one to help. And she will, the town accountant has been working really, really hard to figure this stuff out and it's just absolutely impossible. She would really appreciate help getting that stuff figured out. And then in the event that there are projects that we want to pursue that we're not entirely sure whether they'll fall under the eligibility criteria, we may have something that we can ask and clear it with and move forward.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're all set there. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
All right. So last week, we voted on some chapter ninety requests. And the amounts were were not accurate. So we have the adjusted amounts here and we are going to we're going to revote those chapter ninety requests. So I think we have to vote to cancel last week's vote. So I'll state a motion to cancel the vote we made last week for chapter ninety reimbursements.
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I will read off this list that's similar to last week and we'll vote that. We have, these are for paving projects in North Brookfield. We have Air Street for fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and sixty-eight cents. Brown Street for thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. King Road for one hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And Mill Road for one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. We did not have enough money to cover everything that they wanted to do, so we had to knock off a couple of things. And that's why we have these now. So I'll state a motion to approve that, the chapter ninety requests as of this reading.
So moved.
Second, discussion?
Highway's been going around repairing the culverts at these locations before they do the road paving. So if you see them out repairing your culvert or the pipe going under the ground is what they're called. They are in the process of doing that, which is what you want to do before you pave. They'll be grinding up the roads and resurfacing as they go. I believe they put the top coat on this year. And they'll do the finish coat next year. So if you think they're repaving your road again next year, it's the second coat that has to be done.
Right.
To bind the.
Because we've, we've had in the past, people that say, you know, you just paved the road last year, why are you repaving it this year? That's just a top coat because they, they do it in the fall. And then that way over the winter, if it heaves and settles and all that stuff. And then in the spring, they put a top coat on so you won't have to deal with any bumps or anything for however long it lasts after that, so.
So I know he got a bunch of calls last year for paving the road again.
Yep, and the year before and the year before.
It's a second coat, just so everybody knows what, how they do it, if you're curious. And the culverts that are being repaired and replaced have been there for years and years and years. They're just cleaning them out and repairing them, replacing them as needed. So if you see water flowing on your property that wasn't last week and it is this week, it's because the culvert got cleaned out and, and all replaced. So that's the process of doing these things.
That's it. All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, new business, vote on permanent borrowing. I got nothing here.
Yeah, you do, you should.
I don't think.
Vote of the Board of Selectmen, I moved at the sale. Oh, you didn't get it?
You can have mine.
Do I have to read the whole thing?
I think so, yeah.
Great. Sorry, everybody. I got three pages here.
Wait, let me see what you have there.
Well, that's the one that was in mine?
This is the one you want to read. It's only one page and then on the back.
Oh. Well, you get to read that, I asked for the motion.
So we're down to two pages.
All right, so.
All these numbers.
So what we have is we have permanent borrowing. And I'll state a motion to approve that permanent borrowing.
Go, John.
Two minutes.
Yeah. I moved at the sale of the one, one hundred, one million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars general obligation land acquisition bonds of the town dated October three, twenty twenty-two. The bonds to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand, six eighty-nine point forty-five in accrued interest. If any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on March fifteen of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year twenty twenty-four, amount one ten, hundred and ten thousand, interest rate five percent. Year twenty thirty, no, it goes down. Twenty twenty-five, amount is one oh five at five percent. Year twenty twenty-six, hundred and five thousand at five percent. Twenty twenty-seven, hundred and five thousand at five percent. Twenty twenty-eight, hundred and five thousand at five percent. Twenty twenty-nine, hundred and five thousand at five percent. Twenty thirty, hundred and five thousand at five percent. Twenty thirty-one, hundred and five thousand at five percent. Twenty thirty-two, hundred and five thousand at five percent. Twenty thirty-five, three hundred and fifteen thousand at four percent. Twenty thirty-seven, two hundred and ten thousand at four percent. Further noted that the bonds maturing on March fifteen, twenty thirty-five, and March fifteen, twenty thirty-seven, each a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Term bond due March fifteen, twenty thirty-five. Date, March fifteen, twenty thirty-three. Principal amount, hundred and five thousand. March fifteen, twenty thirty-four. Principal amount, hundred and five thousand. March fifteen, twenty thirty-five. Principal amount, hundred and five thousand. Term bond due March fifteenth, twenty thirty-seven. Date, March fifteen, twenty thirty-six. Principal amount, one hundred and five thousand. March fifteen, twenty thirty-seven. Principal amount, one hundred and five thousand. I further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September thirteen, twenty twenty-two and a final official statement dated September twenty, twenty twenty-two, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. I further move that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. I further move that the town treasurer and the board, and the board of selection be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with section SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. I further move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said, said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws. I further move that any certificate or documents relating to the bonds collectively to documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of, of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery or of a manual, manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all the matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect or original signatures. I further move that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry and to effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I'm not going to have anything left for my two minutes after this.
I know, isn't it great?
A method to the madness, right?
Are you done?
That was it?
Yep.
Am I done?
I think so.
Because this says I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting.
That's for the minutes, so I just.
That's for the minutes?
Yeah.
All right.
Want me to read that too or?
No.
So motions are made, I'll second. Discussion?
Gosh, no. Unless you want me to.
Does anybody have any questions about that out there? Anybody at all?
Yeah, what does this refer to, what, what are these bonds for?
This is the municipal project with the purchase of HOX.
Okay, that's what I thought, I wanted to clear that out.
I thought you were going to have me read that again.
It's been done, you know.
I know, town meeting.
Anybody else? While we have the treasurer here, the person who can actually answer the questions.
I might need to text Ann for some hard questions. I'm still working on it.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, so next we have appointments. All right, so Officer Jeff Martin. You want to be the animal control officer?
I do.
All right. Who was the animal control officer, Chris?
Sergeant Chris Donahue, yes.
Now, is there still an alternate?
Jesse Barrett is our current assistant animal control officer, yes.
Okay. I'll state a motion to appoint Officer Martin as the animal control officer.
So moved.
Second, discussion?
Nope, I think he'll do a fantastic job.
Oh, I know he will. He likes dogs.
Yep.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hit the easy button on that one. All right, next we have Joseph Trent Acosta, that's how you pronounce that?
Exactly.
Exactly. All right, alternate for the finance committee. Why on earth is that?
I'm a glutton for punishment.
All right. Experience?
I have been on town boards, I was on the, when I went through Connecticut, I was on the board of the Orange, Connecticut Visiting Nurse Association. Experiences by license and CPA by profession, I have been a CFO retired.
Nice.
So I.
And you've been, you've been to meetings, right? You've been, you've been to a few of the meetings?
I've been to a few of the meetings.
I'll state a motion to approve, appoint Joseph Trent Acosta to the finance committee as an alternate.
So moved.
Second, discussion?
It's good to see that you came to be appointed because we'd like to see people here.
Oh, it's good to meet people.
Yep, yep, and thank you for being a glutton for punishment.
Yes.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, Patrick Gustafson, capital improvement planning committee. Okay, Patrick.
Yeah.
Why do you want to do that?
I saw the position was open and I saw it as an opportunity to continue serving the town in that role.
Okay, I'll state a motion to appoint Patrick Gustafson to the capital improvement committee.
So moved.
Second, discussion?
Nope, it's good to see Patrick getting on boards here and some younger people getting involved in the town committees and whatnot, so thank you, Patrick.
All right. Motion's, motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. All right, sixty-one A release right of first refusal. Okay, so we've got a letter here from the Conservation Commission. This is a letter dated twenty ninth, August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. Pursuant to the provisions of general laws, chapter sixty-one A, section fourteen, North Brookfield Conservation Commission has voted to waive our right of first refusal on the following: Sale of property owned by Daniel Kittredge and Rochini M. Prabaker, Hillsville Road, North Brookfield, Mass, lots one, two, three, and four, recorded with Worcester District Registry of Deeds in book five, one oh two five, page three ninety-six, and plan of land, Hillsville Spencer Road, North Brookfield, Mass, owned by Ryan Road Realty Trust, respectfully submitted Christine Morrison. And then we have a letter from Bill King, Chair of the Planning Board, North Brookfield Planning Board, voted unanimously on request of attorney Padgett Berthium on behalf of Daniel Kittredge to recommend waiving the town's right of first refusal for lots one through four, totaling four point four eight acres located on the south side of Hillsville Road Lot Five with four point twenty-three acres is part of the same request but is not under chapter sixty-one A. Okay. Okay. So I'll state a motion to waive our right of first refusal.
So moved.
Or release the right of first refusal.
Yes.
Right, and I'll second, discussion?
Just so the people out there know what sixty-one A is and the right to first refusal. When someone that owns property, a farmer, so to speak, has their land in sixty-one A, they don't pay the full amount of tax on that. And if they want to subdivide it, they have to pull it out of sixty-one A. There is a tax burden on them. I believe they have to go back five years on what they would have owed. And what this does, the town could purchase that land for the asking price. The consideration for this land is three hundred and ten thousand dollars. We would be buying four lots on Hillsville Road. And for one thing, the town doesn't have the money to do that, to, to keep it as open space. So that's why we, we let it go without purchasing it as first right of refusal. So just so everybody knows, that's, there's been a number of those. Every time somebody comes up with a sixty-one A project, we just don't have the money to buy it and keep it as, it would be open space because we couldn't sell it and profit on it. It would be buying it for open space.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public comment, period. And since John's used his four minutes, he's, we're, we got to open to everybody.
I don't have any wind left in me. I could.
Bill?
I'm just curious to know the status of our spectrum contract, has that been signed yet?
We haven't signed it yet, so we're still waiting to hear back from them on a couple of things.
Is there any way to, since they have monopoly in town, is there any way to have them required to extend cable to certain roads over a period of time?
Well, that's a good question. We tried that. Oh boy, was it back in like two thousand and twelve? And they said they were going to, provided, the people that signed up, signed up for a certain amount of years, but then it never happened. And we've never been able to get a really good answer on it from them. But like you said, they are the only game in town, so it makes it a little difficult.
Were we trying to get ARPA to extend that?
Well.
We were supposed to be talking.
We're trying to get a quote too.
Again, that's part of it is we're trying, we got to hear back from them on what they'll do before the ARPA committee can talk about it, so, because they don't have any information.
I did try, I reached out to, to them on two occasions and theoretically got to the person I was supposed to talk to and then never heard back. I was just asking, just wanted to finally get a map of where they actually have service and where they don't, and I couldn't.
So I know we don't have it down on the, like the Hillsville where Ashley Road hits Hillsville. And we don't have it on Old West Brookfield and then there's several other roads we don't have it on. And in years past, we have had people ask for it. But the cost, because you know, when you get into those outlining roads, there's less people on them, they're further from the main lines. So there's a lot of construction work and, and the argument is they want to see those people sign up for three to five years. they wanna see those people sign up for three to five years, ten years, whatever the case may be, before, or even put in a little bit. But we came to an initial agreement back in, I, you know, like two thousand twelve, I forget what year it was, but it was back then, and then they never did anything. So we have yet to get an answer, and like Ethan said, he's called twice. So, uh, when we finally nail something down, uh, we'll, we'll move forward with that, because we want everybody to get it. And that's part of the ARPA thing, because if people are stuck home because of a pandemic or, you know, whatever natural disaster there might be, um, they're gonna need internet, right? Or at, at the very least, phones. So, uh, we do have Verizon, I believe, in those areas, but that doesn't, DSL's not that great, especially when you get that far. So, um, what else?
Is something other than DSL? Go back to sleep, John. My antenna is still working fine. Okay.
You know, it was so much better before, when the antennas were still a thing.
I have a map from when we signed the last contract.
You do?
Yeah, so I'll try to remember tomorrow, I'll scan it and send it to you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Personally, how do you get them to respond?
You gotta be them to answer that question, Bill.
Can you go to the State Department Utilities or whoever regulates them?
I don't know. Possibly.
Give Ann Goldie a call, maybe. She might have a, an in there.
Do you have it where you are?
Because I, no, I am for a DSL service, and it's, since January, it's, it's.
So, so I would, I would do that, contact, contact your state rep and your state senator and complain.
I know Brooks Pond doesn't have it either, down there. That guy was here last year.
Right, that's right.
Yeah. So, I don't know how far down.
Do you have it where you are?
You do, yeah. So I don't know how to come down.
How far past your house does it go?
I don't know.
Because I, I don't think it goes all the way to the end. Because you're on Ashley Road, right?
Right.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it doesn't go all the way down, because I don't think they have it on the corner. But, anyway, um, so yeah, it's, it's problematic, and it would be nice to have, you know, that service, especially since they can't watch our show. You know, we're, you know, we gotta look at our fan base, right? So. I know. Um, all right, what else? Anything else?
Yeah. An issue that comes up, I've, you know, been on various boards, committees, and commissions over the years. Issue that comes up from time to time when you're trying to, and say, work on a project or gather information for, uh, something, uh, important, uh, and you contact, uh, various town departments or, or such. Sometimes you either get no response or, uh, not a response in a timely fashion. Is there any recourse or anything, uh, you know, maybe send out a letter that says, you know, uh, other towns, boards, and commissions are entitled to pertinent information when they're requested, or?
Do you have a specific instance you'd refer to, or?
Well, there's been a couple, I don't wanna point fingers right now here, but, uh, you know, there's been instances over time.
All right, so say there's a committee or board that you can't get ahold of, have you been to their meetings to ask?
Well, uh.
Is it this board?
No.
All right. So if, so if you go to their meeting, then you can ask there?
Right.
Because they are, they are posted.
It's like some town departments don't have meetings.
Oh, oh, so you're referring to a specific department?
Well, no, uh, well, it's been, uh, like I said, over, over a period of time, there've been instances.
Well, depending, depending, depending on the department, um, if you're having real difficulty, send us a letter and we'll look into it. And so uh, some, some boards and committees and departments are, fall under o- other elected boards and committees, um, where we wouldn't have any real control, but we can inquire. So.
Kind of for future reference.
For instance, the Board of Health, the Water Department, they're elected. Playground Committee's elected. We don't have any say. We can inquire, though. So. But if you have an issue, if anybody has an issue getting ahold of anybody, feel free to send us an email, and we'll respond to that, so. Okay, is that it, is your question?
Good enough, thanks.
All right. Ethan?
I figured something here, I'll just put a plug in for tomorrow night, six o'clock here. The Downtown Development Committee just doing a little presentation on the Complete Streets Grant Project that we've got in the works. So we had a meeting with the, um, sports selectmen last week, in hours and things, and, um, uh, so we've got what we think is probably a pretty final version of what's gonna happen in this first phase, but we have an additional two phases beyond this, so we're looking to sort of show people what, what we're thinking and what they'd like to see, and just give people an idea of what we've got in store.
All right, so the next two phases, what are those exactly? Do you, do you know what they are, like, in phase, or do you just, is it just like one sweeping thing?
I think that
That's gonna be divided into?
The second phase is going to be the Hannaford intersection, um, and potentially the west side of Main up to the library or up to the Adams Block, I'm not sure if that was included. And then the third phase was the remainder of the west side.
Because some of that might be touched on in the first phase.
It's possible, yeah, I think it got, there's no, I, I don't think they're requiring anything. It doesn't have to stay, you can, you can juggle it if you want.
And then the third phase would be?
The remainder of the west side, so like where the, um, townhouse is.
Right, up past Ma- to Maple Street, or?
To.
Or just beyond Maple Street?
Initial drawings, um, the initial concept was past Maple, was around the corner of Cemetery. Um, I don't know, that's sort of, you know, who knows if that's gonna stay the way it is or not.
Okay. All right, um, just out of mild curiosity, does anybody know who's responsible for the curb in front of Algoos?
The tower section?
The part that's missing an actual curb.
The, the CMR PC is. He, he did that to make it safe, so it wasn't gravel and everything, and they were supposed to work with him, but he never got hold of them, the engineer. So that curbing, that sixty feet or whatever it is, will be done as part of the streets and sidewalk.
Okay.
Al did the concrete curbing, uh, entryways.
Right.
He did that, but the section in between is, is up to the.
Okay.
The new sidewalk.
Because I know, I know, when I, when I, when I talked to Bill, he thought Algo was responsible for that, so. All right.
My understanding of that meeting, too, but.
Wasn't agreed.
All right, well, we'll, we'll figure that out, but, um, because that can't, that can't stay that way.
Nope.
So.
He had to pay for safety reasons, so it'll be followed.
Right. All right. Um, anything else?
Put a plug in for, uh, you have any announcements, Oktoberfest, October first, at, uh, Common Grounds?
Okay.
Friends of the Townhouse, uh, hosting it. The vendors of food.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then proceeds will go to the townhouse, or?
Yes. They'll go to the Friends of Townhouse. Going today, about, uh, match, matching grant for thirty-five thousand dollars, so, uh, the proceeds will go to that, help beat that matching grant.
And what's the matching grant, how much?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, okay. All right, excellent, anything else? Barry?
I'm good.
Allison?
I'm good.
I think we're good.
John? Oh, I do have a couple of those.
Anybody else?
All right, John. Uh, I wanna thank Tina, Tina Floria and her family for donating a new flag, uh, for the little park in the center of town. Brandon and myself and Tina, uh, put it up, uh, last week. The other one was getting tattered. Uh, Sal just bought a new flag for the playground, uh, because that one was getting tattered. Uh, so the Playground Committee, uh, bought that. I also wanna thank Stats, uh, for their, I, I don't know just how much they, they made, but they had the, uh, festivities over there over the weekend. There were eight ball games, I believe, four, four, or?
Still Hearts?
Still Hearts. Did I say Stats?
I'm sorry.
Still Hearts, sorry.
So, thank you Still Hearts.
Thank you Still Hearts, uh, for your efforts in, in, uh, the donation money. I don't, I'm not sure what it was, but they were using the new softball, uh, diamond in the field over there. The place was packed, uh, and they also had games up at the high school, and then I think they had a playoff and a runoff, uh, down at the playground afterwards. Uh, thanks, everybody, for, for, uh, participating in that. Uh, also, the master plan, uh, has, has been going on for months now, uh, through the planning board. Uh, Bill's here, uh, we had a, uh, John Turner told us about it, uh, the other day. It's coming, uh, the open space plan is also coming, they're on their way. Uh, they're in the, almost in the print, are they almost in the print? Sec, it's coming to print. Revisions for ADA compliance of the Open Space and Recreation Plan? Yes. Will have to be submitted back to the state, and it's supposed to be a two-week turnaround. Yep, and I met with John Turner, uh, the other day, and we're forming a committee for the ADA. They need three people, I got, uh, someone for one of the positions there. Uh, so the open space, uh, is coming, and also the master plan. It's well overdue, but I think it's gonna come out, uh, pretty well, and I wanna thank, uh, John Turner and, uh, Ann Hicks. And I think Brandon, you, you've been taking part of that, too. Uh, forgetting that. It, it's a, it was a big undertaking, uh.
Yeah, a big delay because of COVID.
COVID and everything, and, uh.
Get things moving.
I think that people pay seventy thousand dollars to have these things done, and we're doing it for under twenty-five, uh, because of the efforts of, of these, these guys here, uh, that are, and women. Uh, they're, they've done a fantastic job, uh, and it's, it's coming, so. I think that was it. Thank you.
Are you sure?
I could keep going, I'm not gonna.
All right, announcements. The North Brookfield Water Department will be flushing water mains throughout town beginning Monday, September twenty-sixth through Friday, October seventh. The purpose of the flushing is to remove sediment buildup in the mains. The flushing may result in temporary discoloration of the water. Caused by small particles dislodged during the flushing, this discoloration might stain your laundry, especially white materials. Flushing is performed between the hours seven-thirty AM and three-thirty PM. We post our daily flushing schedule on the North Brookfield Water Department Facebook page. If you would like additional information, please call the Water Department at five oh eight, eight six seven, zero two zero seven. Respectfully, Jamie Flomond, Superintendent of Brookfield Water Department. Any other announcements?
I did have one other thing, uh.
Of course you did.
I did, I forgot to. Uh, last weekend, the senior center has been, has been doing very well. Uh, their participation is, is up from, the COVID kinda set them back, and then we had a few problems over there. But there, uh, there's a lot of people going back there for the various, uh, things that they offer. And last week, uh, my wife and I went over and we cooked lunch for them. We had hot dogs out on the grill, and just to see the, the people in there, uh, enjoying themselves. They've, they're, uh, doing dinners Tuesdays and Wednesdays now. So if there's anybody out there that hasn't been to the senior center, uh, because of different things, or you're afraid to go, or whatever, very nice place, they're very accommodating. Courtney and her daughters are, uh, serving the food and everything, they've got a good kitchen staff. Uh, the food is great. If you wanna go, there's three bucks a meal, uh, you gotta sign up for it so they know how much to, to get, but, uh, they're really doing well over there, and they would like to see more activity if, uh, anybody wants to go over there. Chief Smith has been over there, Jeff Martin's been over there, I asked the Police Department to make a showing over there because they appreciate, uh, you know, they wanna see, uh, the town involved over there, so. And I've been stopping in once in a while, uh, just to keep an eye on things, but anytime you wanna volunteer.
You're gonna be a senior, so.
I'm trying to keep a space open for the next couple of years, I wanna share with my name on it.
Sure.
So, but they're doing all kinds of different things, they're sewing, they're knitting, uh, they wanna open up the, uh, maybe a cribbage, uh, table, uh, if you're interested in that. They need people that wanna play the games, uh, they used to have bingo, uh, that kinda went by the wayside because of COVID, but if, if somebody wants to go over there and, and start the bingo back up, I'm sure they would be, uh, like to do it, uh, get, get people back involved in that, so. I think it was a penny a game or something, because you can't gamble over a certain amount, so. Not gonna win big money, but it's the fun of it, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's it, so enjoy the senior center if you, if you can. Uh, they have a little food pantry over there also. If you wanna, uh, put some food in there, or you need some food, there's a little, a little box outside.
You done?
That was it?
All right.
I've done it again.
All right, I'll stand a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute. So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.